Adrienne Brightfelder, City Clerk. You are hereby directed to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Tuesday, January 17th, 2023, at 5:30 PM in the Historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting a work session on federal and state grant updates.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for January 17th, 2023. As a reminder to viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topic, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts. Attendance for the session is as follows. Mayor Pro Tem Roussel, here. Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmembers Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
Thank you. City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
And City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. Our work session topic is federal and state grant updates. I will turn it over to Director of Strategic Partnerships, Terry Goodman.
Thank you, Adrienne. Terry Goodman, Director of Strategic Partnerships. And thank you to Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem and council members for having us here this evening. We're on a schedule. Myself and team, which is going to be the theme tonight, the team that is delivering this report to you. We are on a schedule to come to you every six months to give you an update on grants. That includes federal grants, state grants, private grants, grants of all sorts. And we are happy to be here this evening and we hope that we can keep our presentation not short but thorough and then allow for any questions you might have. Our last work session was only 30 minutes and so I know there were some unanswered questions we heard about after the fact, so I'm happy to invite you to ask questions this evening after our presentation. So again, the theme tonight is team. My job is to introduce the team. And since we began this journey, you know, less than two years ago, we have, we think, created not only a great team that includes Andy Seth, who is with us remotely, and he is the President of Sustainable Strategies DC, Justin Tilchin, our Grant Analyst and Assistant, who works here in Dubuque with me, and also Abhishek Rai, who is our ICMA Fellow, he has his MPA, his Masters in Public Administration, and he is our ICMA Management Fellow, working with us specifically on a story map so that we can have greater transparency with the public and with you and with elected officials in Washington and in Des Moines. So that is our team. And in our first PowerPoint, we showed you that we have this motto that was shared by the City Manager many years ago, and that is, we will lose, we'll miss every shot that we don't take. So same with grants. We'll lose every grant that we don't apply for. We know that. So we do take a very aggressive approach to writing grants and working with our partners to secure grants. And we are grateful for the partnership team we have in Washington with Sustainable Strategies and Andy Seth in particular, but also for Justin and Abhishek. We're a good team and we're having some good results tonight to report. So to begin, we will cover federal, state, and other grants, the process that we use to achieve grants, and then we will have a presentation from Abhishek on this story map that he's been working very diligently on, that I think you're going to like, and that we hope to launch by February 1st, so that we can share it with the public and put it on our grants page on the city's website. So to begin, Andy Seth, who is not here in person, but he's remote, many of you have met him. He has been to Dubuque. He's attended growing sustainable communities conferences. He started with us in 2008. He wrote the first Tiger grant that we secured at 5.6 million that paved and provided for the infrastructure, the public infrastructure in the Millwork District and leveraged private development in that area. He also wrote the State of Good Repair Grant for the Intermodal Facility, which is in the Millwork District, but also the other pieces of it that we have. And he's been very active in writing our EPA Brownfield Grants and also EDA Grants and other grants, but he's a person that ironically, when Mayor Buell was elected and ran on the platform of sustainability, and I was new at the city, I didn't know where to turn in terms of that specific topic in Washington. So started doing a lot of research and contacting different firms and groups, but I saw this group in Washington and I thought, this sounds like exactly what, a group that would help us. And so I cold called and Andy Seth answered the phone and we started talking and I said, you know, we're interested in someone who can help us to write federal grants. Federal grants have very specific language requirements, each agency and department, and this is where Andy comes in. Not only does he know the people in those agencies and departments, but he's an excellent grant writer and he understands the, what the grant reviewers are looking for, particularly Department of Transportation, EPA, Department of Energy, National Endowment for the Arts and Humanities. So he's very knowledgeable. When we finished the conversation and I said, I'm going to speak to the City Manager about, you know, when we need a grant, if we can hire you, and he said, Terry, don't you remember me? And I didn't, but I did after he told me, but I don't know if you all recall when the Upper Mississippi River was designated a National Heritage River, the Upper Miss, and there were 10 National Heritage Rivers that President Clinton announced in his second term. And so it was determined that Dubuque would be the location for the announcement for the entire Upper Miss, from St. Louis up to Lake Itasca. So we had to plan a party, a national party here, and I was pretty busy at the museum doing other things. And so in the door walks this young guy from American Rivers. At the time, he was working for American Rivers and he said, I'm here to help. The White House sent me, and so he was here to help put on the Good Morning America program at Eagle Point Park. I don't know if any of you were there, but the announcement was made and we had, James Lee Witt at the time was the FEMA Director. So Andy was no stranger to Dubuque even when I called, cold-called him in 2008. So Andy, I'm going to pass this over to you. Are you ready?
I am ready. I'm going to start sharing my screen.
Okay.
I know it takes a second, but can everyone see the presentation that I'm looking at?
Yes, we can.
Okay, excellent. So hi, everyone. Great to be with you. This is Andy Seth, and as Terry said, I am the President of Sustainable Strategies DC. So it's great to be with you today. And for all the praise that Terry has given me, I work with a lot of cities across the country. You guys make it super easy to go chase funding in that the agencies want to invest in places, cities, that do great work. You guys do great work. It's easy to get another grant if your last grant is successful. You guys are a rock star and it's a place that the federal government has no problem throwing more money at. So I put together this PowerPoint, some things that I want to cover today, just a little bit of background on who we are, what we do, some of the funding activities that we do in Dubuque, some of our grant successes to date. And again, as Terry mentioned, we've been working for and with you guys for more than 10 years. So just a lot of projects that I've had my fingers on and some funding, great funding that has come back to the city. I want to spend some time talking about this year and the next several years in that we've got a couple of big funding opportunities, and you know about the bipartisan infrastructure bill. That has put five years of big monies out on the street. Immediately following that was the Inflation Reduction Act, more big monies. And appropriations, there are new opportunities with, you know, the regular funding cycle to keep grabbing that money. So it's just money after money after money that is out there, and we just need to be smart in going to chase it. And a little bit of homework at the end, how we can best work together going forward to keep the success that is happening in Dubuque. So again, just a little bit about us, we work with cities across the country. I've been doing this for 20-plus years, and we represent all kinds of cities, but it's the mid-sized cities that we specialize in, in that they have the ability to do the work and we have some services that we think are very tailor-made to that size local government. And that's the exact science that Dubuque, that's our sweet spot. So we worked with local governments over the 25-plus years. We've helped cities chase $5 billion. So a lot of money coming back to cities to do a lot of great things. And it's in all the spaces and all the areas that local governments do work. So it's infrastructure, it's economic development, it's public safety, it's the arts, it's health, you name it. There is likely a funding source out there, either at the federal, state, or foundation levels, and we can help you, and this is part of what we do, help you identify where those monies are. We can help write the grant applications to go chase those monies and build all the support that you need to get those applications across the finish line. So again, working with Dubuque for, you know, since 2008, a long time, we are in a great groove in that we are very plugged in, always talking to each other, always know what the next opportunity is that we're chasing, and always have the wheels rolling so that it's not stop-start, stop-start. We know where we need to be, we know when the funding is coming around the corner, and we're always trying to get ready for that next grant opportunity. And to do that, we're jumping on conference calls. Terry, Justin, and I have a conference call every Friday to talk about where we are on current applications, what's coming down the road, just to plug in and stay connected. You've got a lot of city teams that are interested in grant funding. I've had the opportunity to work with a lot of these teams, and I applaud you. You guys were very early and aggressive once these big infrastructure bills did get passed to start putting your ideas together on what you might want from these big opportunities. I find that the issue that a lot of communities have, and this is not your issue, is what's the project? Are we ready? Do we have the match? Are we, you know, interested in this opportunity in front of us? If you can identify the opportunity, the project, then you can start plugging in lots of funding sources to serve those needs. You guys got organized very quickly. You started throwing ideas out for projects that made sense now and later. And again, this is five years of money through the infrastructure bill. So there'll be multiple bites at these apples over the next couple of years. So keep the idea generation going, keep projects on the path to being more shovel-ready. There are some planning dollars out there, but by and large, a lot of the funding that is available wants to support shovels in the ground. So anything you can do to advance the readiness of projects, you are advancing your competitiveness as well. As Terry mentioned, I put pen to paper and helped write these grant applications. You guys are very plugged in, coming to DC, pushing the delegation, pushing the agencies, and I support Terry on some of those trips. Terry does a great job, has many, many, multiple relationships herself. And we also, as issues arise in the local government world, will often put together coalitions, and this is how we really kick-started a lot of the work that we did back a dozen years ago. We were interested in a lot of the energy efficiency, renewable energy, climate change monies that the Obama administration was rolling out. We formed climate communities, we pulled together a group of local governments that were interested in that topic, wanted to see funding opportunities in that space, and Dubuque and Roy Buell were front and center in that effort. So lots of opportunities, as you're doing good work, for us to showcase you guys to the agencies. As Terry mentioned, we've had some great successes over the years in a lot of the major projects that you guys have worked on. It's a long list, but just over the last bunch of years, over the time span, it's been $55 million of monies coming back to Dubuque. You guys are a national model. The work you did in the Historic Millwork District is honored by EPA, and you guys, I was able to help pull some of that money in. In the first grant, I think we won with you guys, for you guys, was a DOT. It was called Tiger Money way back in the day, but helped get that started with Complete Streets in the Historic Millwork District and just have gone from there. You'll see on this slide just places around town where there is money coming in from federal sources to support, again, the great work that you are doing. So keep up that work, keep finding new places, and we'll keep chasing more of this money. Let me talk about the three buckets of funding that I started the presentation alluding to. One is just appropriations. If there were no infrastructure bill, if there were no Inflation Reduction Act, there is still a lot of regular funding through the appropriations process to all of the agencies that are interested in funding local governments. And on that last slide, that's where that money has come from, from those year-to-year appropriations bills. So we have gotten lots of Brownfield funding, we've gotten funding, as Terry mentioned, from the Economic Development Administration, from the Department of Justice COPS program to fund police officers, from the National Park Service. Comiskey Park was just a regular appropriation to fund parks in areas that the parks have, you know, needed some love and was able to win a big grant for some Comiskey Park revitalization. Plenty of opportunities just in the regular cycles. On top of that, and you guys are taking advantage of this too, earmarks have returned. They were off the street for about 10 years, and over the last two years, your delegation, at least your House member, your senators have sat out the last couple of cycles, but I think there's an opportunity to get those two members of the Senate interested in earmarking too, in that every round, the last two rounds, you've seen more members coming to the table. And Senator Grassley has a long background of providing earmarks across the state to Dubuque. So I think there's going to be an opportunity either this year or hopefully in the years ahead for his office to participate, but you'll have some opportunities in all the spaces that I'm mentioning, public safety, transportation, economic development, parks, those can be earmarked projects too. Those funding opportunities, the earmark process is going to get started in the February-March timeframe, so we should begin to put our ideas together. We know the buckets where they will earmark funding, which particular accounts, which agencies. We just need to go through a process to identify some of the projects that make sense for this round of earmarks. The big one for local governments is the infrastructure bill. So bipartisan got passed tail end of, what was that, probably 2021. So $1.2 trillion. It's taken the agencies a little while to develop this in that most of this funding was brand-new programs. So they had to stand up, write the regulations, write the funding notices, hire the staff to push these monies out the door. And there are dozens of areas in this bill that local governments should be interested in, particularly in the water, transportation, and energy spaces. This is just more money than we'll probably see in our lifetimes for those needs at the local government level. There's opportunities, a lot of this money is coming to Iowa, so there's monies to hold your hand out for some state support, but tons of opportunities for competitive applications directly from the federal government. This is something that you guys have done a great job on. We need to keep this focus with this administration and with this funding source. They're very interested in sustainability and equity in most, if not all, of the programs that are getting rolled out. They want to see how the federal investment will reduce carbon emissions, will reduce vehicle miles traveled, are benefiting distressed census tracts. So we need to be smart as well about focusing on those themes. That will make us most competitive. And we're going to see a ton of these opportunities roll out again this year, and some of the first of the five-year opportunities are going to roll out this year too. So it's going to be a fire hose just with the money coming. In this bill, we have already started to chase dollars. So we submitted an application and won this funding in 2022 for the $2.28 million. It was a planning grant for the 14th Street Overpass, for the roundabouts on Sixth Street and Elm Street, and for some shared use paths to Kerper Boulevard Industrial Park. So we have the ability, there's five years ahead of us, four years ahead of us, on this infrastructure bill, to plan this project and to chase with another bite at the apple, more DOT raise money to fund the construction of what we will plan. So we were very lucky in that the first round of the infrastructure bill raise dollars, we got one of those. If you win planning dollars in round five, there aren't going to be monies around to construct with the big infrastructure monies. There'll be appropriations monies, but the infrastructure monies just made this program so much bigger. So we've got a great opportunity ahead of us. Let's hurry up on this planning and let's chase the bigger bite, the construction dollars, in a couple of years' time when you've got the design specs, when you're ready to construct that important work. We've got a couple of applications as well sitting over at DOT that are going to be just as transformative for Dubuque. There was a reconnecting communities program. Here, they wanted to invest in infrastructure that split communities, that created two halves, and we've got a project to create an overpass at Hawthorne Street to cross the train tracks. The Safe Streets and Roads for All program we submitted, that is a program that wants to have zero, the goal, accidents that result in injuries and deaths. So we are putting together, and this is the first step that everyone has to do to chase later competitive construction monies, project monies. You have to put together a crash reduction plan, so we've got monies, a request, working with ECIA to put together that plan, and again, in the out years, we'll chase construction project monies for that. And we just submitted at the end of the year, this is a technical assistance program, thriving communities. What it will do, they will assign staff members at the Department of Transportation and other experts to work with us as we are chasing these dollars. So we will be wide on their radar screen, and they will understand through that technical assistance, all of our needs, will be able to get some inside help on chasing the dollars that you need. I've got, and this is just a short list, this list, you know, there's a lot of opportunities, but these are the ones that we know just in the next half-year to longer that we'll be chasing through the infrastructure bill. There's not been recycling monies for as long as I think I've been working in this space. There's big recycling monies over the next couple of years to invest in a wide range of activities. We're going to use, we're going to put together an application to chase monies to purchase new recycling carts and trucks. EV infrastructure, electric vehicle infrastructure, another enormous investment in this space. And what they want to do is they want to build charging stations in communities across the country. They're going to have five rounds of this funding. Likely, the first round will open up at the end of the month, and we'll chase this money, and we can keep chasing this money to build more electric infrastructure as you need it. Couple of programs that are coming a little later. One is to replace failing bridges. We need to take a look at your bridge ratings to see if there is any bridges that need some attention. There is railroad monies to take a look at crossroads and reducing accidents at those spaces. There's smart monies, and you've got a super innovative program with the streets, again, that ECIA has led the effort on. They, at the DOT, are investing big monies to, number one, help communities get to where you are, just because a lot of communities don't have what you have as far as transportation information systems that really inform how to run an efficient network. But there'll be monies in there as well to help you go further. So in the fall, we'll take a look at that. And again, we're looking at raise monies to chase the construction, probably not this year, but next year, just when the planning is done. Let me mention just back on that last slide, I was over at the Department of Energy today, and you guys are going to get, this is energy monies that was through the infrastructure bill. There's $123,000 that Dubuque will get directly. You've got a formula funding allocation. Tomorrow, they told me, you're going to get notice of how to put your hands on those dollars. It's a short process, you're going to have to submit an application, but it's yours. $123,000 for a wide range of projects. All you need to demonstrate is that you are reducing carbon emissions, you're decreasing energy use. There's some metrics, but it can fund a lot of different things. And they're doing something interesting in this round in that they've pre-negotiated costs with a number of vendors. This money was around 10-plus years ago. They've pre-negotiated some costs to allow you, if you're interested, you can use the money any way you want, but if you are interested in purchasing any of the equipment that you might go chase yourself, they're going to have some relationships with vendors that are going to get better pricing, and it will just make the process move a lot faster with fewer reporting requirements if you go through that process. We'll see more information about that tomorrow, but here is $123,000 coming your way very soon to invest in some small energy projects. The big money, though, in the energy space is the Inflation Reduction Act. This is huge in that we haven't seen this kind of investment. The early Obama days had some clean energy investment that local governments could take advantage of. This is much, much bigger than that. So it's $369 billion in clean energy and climate. And some of these opportunities, that's the overall package, but a number of these opportunities, and they're through the Environmental Protection Agency, a number of these opportunities, cities can go chase. The focus, they're going to roll out something probably in the next two weeks that we'll really be able to lay our eyes on. They've asked for feedback, we've provided some comments on how we want to see this money available for local governments to use. They, and this is in the legislation itself, you have to design programs locally that benefit low-income and minority residents. So that is a lens that, as we see this opportunity in front of us, again, very soon, will develop some ideas that hit that target audience, but it's an enormous opportunity to invest, again, where dollars have not existed for quite a long time. And this is some of the areas that local governments can take advantage of, and this is one-year money. So this is just huge sums that are going to hit the street in these areas. There's $28 billion in the EPA Greenhouse Gas Reduction Fund. Now that will fund a number of different audiences, and those different audiences may participate from Dubuque, but in the local government space of that $28 billion, this is $7 billion set aside for local governments to go chase these projects, to invest in technologies, again, that benefit those disadvantaged places in your city. Another program, the Environmental and Climate Justice Block Grants, again, they're rolling this out, same kind of focus that they want to identify those census tracts, those areas that have been bypassed, and they want to make sure that that is the focus of this investment. There's new DOT money, and again, they want to look at same kind of disadvantaged places. We've chased money for complete streets, we've chased money, we will, for smart technologies. This just provides $1.9 billion new in this space. And besides the money, there's some tax incentives and tax credits that local governments, they're developing guidance, how you can take advantage of this, particularly in the area of green vehicles and renewable energy. And you can sell those on the market, you can get the benefit that other for-profit entities can get with tax credits. I will close just with some next steps that we just need to have in front of us. One, just, we need to keep watching with what is being released as far as the funding opportunities. We need to keep identifying projects for those funding opportunities. As I mentioned early, design engineering, planning, keep that moving. You just want to be as competitive as you can be, and to be competitive is a project that is shovel-ready, near that is shovel-ready, near shovel-ready. Those are going to get the first dollars, a lot of dollars out there, but, but let's make our projects as attractive as possible. Match, as, as a council, you'll need to, to be ready to, to support matching. All of these grants are going to have matching requirements, usually in the 20 to one-to-one range, 20% of a total package or a 50-50. So somewhere in that space, local dollars or state dollars or any other funding sources that you can bring to the table. Let's not miss opportunities just because we don't have match available for them. And last, you guys do a great job at this. You know, every agency wants to see community support. You've got a lot of great nonprofits that are willing to write letters, a lot of great community groups that will lend a hand, you've got a delegation that fights for you to chase and bring home these dollars. So we just need to be ready to, to activate that support, too. So I'll leave it there. Terry, do you want to take it unless there are questions here?
No, that's fantastic. And Andy, thanks so much. It's great to see your face. We see you on Teams all the time, but I'm glad the council could see you tonight and, and hear the information that you have to share. I just want to reiterate something that I put in the memo. You know, on an, in an annual year in the past, we would pay Andy to write grants for us, and there might be, at the most, maybe six grants a year. We're now having Andy write sometimes six or more grants in a month, if that can happen. Just to give you a sense of the scale of, of the number of federal and state and private sector foundation grants that are out there. And to remind you as well, how important it is that we develop a process and that we invited the whole community. We began a little over two years ago, when we knew ARPA was first released, we expected an infrastructure bill would come, as it did. And the first thing we did was, instead of just staying within the city staff and talking about what opportunities were coming, we had a community-wide meeting, and then we had another, and we're going to have another for IRA. We have these meetings, and we've had up to 200 different people, city staff, county partners, nonprofits, developers, businesses, come to hear about what grants are available. And I think it's been significant in the fact that we're going to see measures now tonight, and we're going to talk about grants that weren't just received by the city of Dubuque, you know, the actual legal entity, but funds that have been received by the community we live in, and that includes grants that are going to the county as well. So I just want you to know. And because we're drinking from a fire hose, the process we set up, actually, I want to say Justin Tilchin set this up, and I have to ring those bells for all of our teammates here. Justin identified with me the Built Infrastructure Group, which is huge, and the Human Infrastructure Group, which includes a lot of our nonprofit partners. We meet monthly. We go through lists of priorities in the infrastructure group for the city. It's largely city staff, but includes our partners at ECIA, particularly Chandra and Kelly. But we, we have this human infrastructure group that includes all these nonprofits. We identify grants that are coming, and then when we hear of a grant, Andy tells us, now we're going to have these energy grants coming. We'll break off into a topic team, and Justin will give more details on that. But then we'll meet with a smaller group of staff that are specifically interested in that grant and need to contribute information to Andy and data and et cetera. And so Justin calls those meetings together with an agenda, with a NOFO highlighted. The NOFO is a Notice of Federal Funding Opportunity. He'll highlight eligibility. Andy provides a lot of this information, too, for us if we don't know, you know, when the grant is due, what the timeline is, what the match has to be, and whether or not our project is eligible. And if it's not, we'll look for another project. So we do have a, a very strong foundation. That's just something I want to leave you with tonight. Between the staff that we have, the partners we have, the desire and the vision we have for a better Dubuque, more equitable, and one that is resilient in these days of climate change, we, and economically successful, we had to create a process for all these grants. So I just want you to know, we have it. The team's in place, the process is in place. State grants, we will not go into as much detail, but you know we have three Destination Iowa grants pending. There's the amphitheater and the DRA and city application. The art museum has a Destination Iowa grant in, as well as the River Museum has a Destination Iowa grant in. We understand that perhaps the governor will be making a decision at the end of the month. These are ARPA funds that have to be spent by the end of 2025, so decisions are important at this time. We've also been successful with some statewide grants for childcare, as you know. The Butler, Cottingham and Butler received one, Hills and Dales received one, I believe. A few other grants have come into the community and into Dyersville, so we're very happy about that, as well as Destination Iowa Grant for Field of Dreams. So we do keep track of all of this. Again, I refer you to our bipartisan, I'm sorry, to our ARPA and bipartisan infrastructure law page on our city website, and as I highlighted in the memo, all the information we've promised the community is in there. There is, there are PowerPoints and information on those two big programs, Bill and ARPA. There are names of grant writers. If you're a nonprofit and you want someone to write a grant for you, there are names of people in the community who agreed to have their names there and their phone numbers. So if you want to have someone write a grant for you, that's there. We also have SharePoint sites that go into greater detail and have news articles on Bill and ARPA. We will do the same for IRA. And then we have an Excel spreadsheet so that everyone can see what grants we've received from where and, and how much we've, we have. And Justin's going to be giving the presentation now, by the numbers, Dubuque Grants by the numbers, and so I'm going to ask Justin to come up and explain to you a little bit more about that. But I want you to know we have that. And then Abhishek is going to talk about transparency and give a demonstration of the story map, so. Justin.
Thank you, Terry. Justin Tilchin, Technical Grant Analyst and Assistant within the City Manager's Office and working with Terry Goodman, and I do reside at 2365 University Avenue here in Dubuque. But just wanted to, to provide a, a brief update on, on some of the baseline numbers and really introduce Abhishek and, and the wonderful product that he's developed here for us. But just do want to reiterate a couple of things that have been said this evening. You know, it's really been exciting. I've just been on about a year and a half now, and so as I sort of looked back and read through Terry's memo even, it was, you know, it was really eye-opening to me to see what, what we've been able to develop, I guess, in this under two years. So, you know, it's been interesting to build on the relationship, the, the long relationship that Sustainable Strategies has had with Dubuque, but with that increase in demand, it's been really a great opportunity to, to take a look and sort of that long-term strategic approach at implementation. So it's been, we've, you know, really, as Terry's just mentioned, been able to develop out sort of this structure and then adding this process to, to help us work through all of these opportunities and engaging our partners as well as fellow staff within the city. So just looking through that process, you know, we've, we've really honed in to a process within our human infrastructure team and, and a lot of our community partners, you know, where we really go through, we, we identify the opportunities, work with them to, to, to evaluate the opportunity, and then to discuss partnerships, whether it be partnerships on matching funds or partnerships on between organizations or staffing, all the intricate, intricate pieces that go into partnering on grant opportunities. But then even within the Built Infrastructure Team, you know, the Engineering Department has done a great job building together a, a, a master projects list to identify sort of projects and their state of readiness. And so it's, it's really helps us and our team sort of identify those projects as opportunities become available. So again, we're always referring, referencing the city council goals and priorities, helping to identify those strategic opportunities within those grants. And then now that we're looking at this long-term timeline as well, what we're developing out is, is utilizing Microsoft Projects to then put some project management software into this as, so that we're aware and ahead of opportunities as they repeat year after year and going forward. We've identified staff that we're working with. We can track and collect all of our resources in terms of those Notice of Funding Opportunities, the website links, all those details on those grant opportunities, we can collect there and share with staff. So the exciting parts that, you know, over this short bit, that we've really established the structure, the process, the implementation, and then, as we'll talk to you tonight, even more of the transparency tools that we're putting out on the public-facing website as well. And just, just tremendous to see that happen within the, the timeline, short timeline that we have. But to talk about the numbers a little bit, just give you a brief update here on total funds that we've received through the community in, between ARPA funds to date, and then also the bipartisan infrastructure law funds. So federally, we have received $42.18 million in grants. From state, we've received $35.8 million. So a total of $76.98 just in grants. Those are competitive grant funds. And then when you add the county's $15 million that they granted through their swapped ARPA funds, takes us over to just over $91 million throughout the community. And then when you add on to that the $45.9 million, which was allocated or direct allocation of ARPA funds through both the county and through the city, that combined was $45.9 million. So to date, we have $122.88 million that have come into the community through these pieces of legislation and some of the regular appropriations that Andy had highlighted as well. So some tremendous opportunities there over just the, in, in under the two years. As Terry mentioned also, we do have the grants that were currently, some of the pending applications. Additionally, I think we've got about three projects on the state revolving loan fund. So those are on the intended use plan and in place for potentially forgivable loans as well on that. So the, Andy talked about the three transit and DOT projects, and then currently we are evaluating, as of like today, we're sort of analyzing and evaluating about a little over eight different funding opportunities across at least six of our city departments today, so. But with, with that, I just want to, you know, instead of sharing just the, the plain old bland numbers and data, wanted to, to highlight what, all the great work that Abhishek's been able to lend to our program, to be able to highlight this information, share this data in a much more tangible way, and then also create that transparency to share with citizens where, where these funds have gone. So with that, I'd like to introduce Abhishek here in just a moment to take a look at and review some of our story map. At our next, at our, our next presentation to you, I do plan that we'll, we'll be able to highlight a little bit more in terms of that strategic plan and looking forward over the next five years, so look forward to that.
Do you know if anyone has any?
Miss May, present.
Yes, Mr. Resnick.
I do have a couple of questions, and this for Mr. Seth, please. And thank you very much for that wonderful presentation and lots of good news. My question, I have two. You mentioned that, I know that we, our match fund is finite, but you mentioned, don't let match fund monies slow us down. I was wondering if you had a, an alternate plan for that?
We should, we should look ahead. There are some big projects coming ahead, and where those big projects are coming ahead, I'm talking specifically about the 16th Street Bridge, in a couple of years' time, you should budget match to, to invest in that space, just to be ready for it. There is state money. State money can always, if it's not federally passed through, but anything that you are receiving state dollars for, if it's project appropriate, we can count that as match. And honestly, we're just going to have to be ready to come out of pocket for, for some of these projects. And just having some kind of reserve of monies in certain spaces that, that give Dubuque the ability to, to keep submitting applications. The worst thing that we could do would be to chase an application, win a competitive round, and these are always hyper-competitive, and then to present problems on the backend that we don't have the match. The agencies have long memories, and they're not quick to invest, reinvest in other projects where, where it's all fallen apart before.
Okay, thank you. And my second question quickly is, we just approved a Central Avenue plan that has business development, transportation, and equity all involved. Is that something that the Inflation Reduction Act is meant to help us with?
That DOT program that I mentioned could be a very good source of funding for that, and depending on what you want to achieve, it sounds like it might line up well with the DOT program. There's still, you know, four more years of infrastructure bill programs, too. But yes, those kind of projects could be very right for the kind of investment that, that we're talking about. That sounds, that sounds on target.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. And I just want to add, as Andy said, we're not seeing all of the bipartisan infrastructure law grants yet. This fund comes out, there's so much money, and then it's divided amongst all the federal agencies and departments, and then they have to sit down as staff and frequently create grants, and they have to, you know, brainstorm, create the programs, create the requirements. And so I just want you to know, the Infrastructure Reduction Act is in the same, same place with IRA. It's going to take a while, as Andy mentioned earlier, to get those grants out on the street. It takes about a year, Andy, I think, you know, it's, unless it's plus-ing up an existing account and increasing the amount of money in an existing grant program, you know, those grants take time to get out. And I know that the Telegraph Herald asked about, the other day about housing, and yes, the omnibus bill that just passed has significant plus-ups in housing programs. And, you know, I think, asked whether or not the city was going to take advantage of those opportunities, and the answer is yes. We don't miss an opportunity to find and fund city council priorities and community goals through our, you know, our North Star Plans, the Climate Action Plan, the Equity Plan, the Comprehensive Plan, and the Arts and Culture Master Plan under all, under city council goals and priorities. So yes, we will be seeking those dollars, but again, it's going to take some time for the money that was just passed and appropriated in December to work its way into programs that are available to us for affordable housing or for other housing. But I don't, I want to let Abhishek have his time here. Thank you, Abhishek. Thank you.
Hello. This is Abhishek Rai. I'm ICMA Fellow, Local Government Management Fellow at the City Manager's Office. My address is 3674 Pennsylvania Avenue. So this story, the Story Map Project is with the focus of creating transparency of all the, all the grant funds we get and how the city is utilizing it, as well as transparency among the community partners and how the money is in the community and how it's benefiting our community members. And it can be overwhelming and difficult to go through Excel sheets and different government websites to, even with Justin's great tools, and it would be difficult to use it. This is a very easy to read, easy to, user-friendly and easy to use portals, which could be used to just see all of the city's accomplishment, as well as all the community funds. We had a change in title as now we have the Inflation Reduction Act. Earlier, it was the IRA BIL Story Map, now it's the Dubuque's Grand-funded Initiatives 2021, 2029, because we have been getting, we will be getting the infla, along with ARPA and BIL, if we will be utilizing Inflation Reduction Act funds, as well as some other funds which are passed, smaller funds which were passed in Washington, and we would be using those for our city projects, as well as in the community. And as you can see, it's divided up into city administration funds and community partners. And this was one of the grants that was present in the last And this was one of the grants that was present in the last, in my last presentation. This is the Jule EV Implementation, where we would be receiving a million, around a million, over a million dollars, $1,073,000 for electrification of the, for electrification of our bus transit system, which this would be used to create a charging station, as well as a bus, an electric, purchase of an electric bus. But I have had the chance to add more to city projects and highlight some of our good work done by different departments. And we, getting the RACE grant is one of our big accomplishments as a department, and, but while we keep talking about it, it would actually help us see what, how it will be used, and you can read the details of how the project, but the project would help us make roundabouts, as well as some of different corridors and some infrastructure related to roads. For example, the Elm Street or a trail over here at the Carper Boulevard. So instead of just talking about it as a $2.8 million fund, we actually see it as a project which helps our community. This is the Airport Bill Grant, which would be used to creating a solar power, solar panel field at our airport and help make our airport energy efficient. We also wanted to highlight the AMERICOR program and some of the funds received for the teen program. And this is mostly used in administration, as well as some extension. So you can read the details, as well as when it was awarded, information such as that. We recently had a work session on the Black Heritage, Dubuque's Black Heritage Survey, which was conducted by our planning department, and we made a story map, our GIS team, and you can actually read the details about it. This was actually funded through ARPA, and you can actually see the story map in that story, the story map created by, for highlighting our Black Heritage Survey results on this story map, or you can actually go through, press this button on the top right and open it in a new tab and go and see this beautiful story map created by our planning department and GIS department. Besides that, we would like to, I would like, I also had some more sections in, in our community partners. One of our, the Field of Dreams, this section I added so that, this was one of the biggest regional investment in our community, and just like to highlight that over here. A couple of grants received for stadium and for water infrastructure in Dyersville and in the Dubuque County, and this is a big investment by our, by the state. Besides that, I also had the chance to add more of our funds in the community, on our community map, and I added four more grants. The IDLE Program, which was the Economic Injury Disaster Loan to, by the U.S. Business Administration for, this was to support businesses during COVID-19 and for the damage, economic damage they had got during COVID-19. And we actually had over 400 recipients and over $20 million, not 20, $19, around $20 million, $19,800,000. This was a major fund we received, and you can actually check over here and see how, who received how much, and just to create a transparency. This is already information available publicly in the, is on the U.S. Small Business Administration's website, but we just, I just created, just put it on the map and to create transparency, and also reflects how it benefited the community as a whole. The Future Ready Iowa Initiative is an initiative by our governor to train IONs for the jobs, and mostly in workforce development, as well as childcare. And you can see who, there were some major projects related to childcare and helping businesses, so you can see. And this would also creates that element of transparency where we can actually see where the funds are going and just not, you know, have paranoia. So, and this was something I talked about last time, the Restaurant Revitalization Fund, funds in the, received by restaurants to, for their damage, for their economic damage during the COVID. And around 30 of our restaurants received this fund. And finally, the Shuttered Venue Grant, which was specifically, again, during the pandemic times where our venues were shut down and some, there were eight live venue and venue, and those organizations, for example, there's Symphony Orchestra and Phoenix Theaters, and these are some of the grants we see for them to survive the pandemic. So this is a product I have been trying to develop since last few months, since my time.
Excuse me, Abhishek, I'm so sorry to interrupt you. This is so, this is so interesting, but we're almost out of time. And I wondered if perhaps you could give us quickly where people can go to find this story map on their own?
So this, this story map is going to be public in January, so this is actually in the development mode, and I've been developing it since last six to eight months. And we would be launching it on our, and there would be a link on the, on the Bill ARPA page on our City of Dubuque website. So you can just go there and check. It will be coming soon, and we would have a press release by our PIO department, hopefully, or some kind of communication. Thank you.
That's super. Thank you so much, and I apologize that we don't have time for questions, but I'm sure that we can all send them to Terry and team and get the answers that we might need. So there being no further business, we stand adjourned for this work session. Thank you.